It is nine o'clock.
It's nine o'clock.
Are we out? We'll have to ask Sylvia, we need more agendas.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Yauer?
Here.
Commissioner Wazalis? Judge Shaw's here. Commissioner Schindel?
Here.
Commissioner Hummel?
Here.
Please stand and join us in the opening prayer. Stay standing for the closing of the engines.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all our blessings. Thank you for the freedom we enjoy. We ask you to be with us this morning as we consider decisions for the county. We ask you to be with us every day, protect us on our highways, the traffic that we have now there. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever, with due justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is to review, approve, disapprove, and award a contract for team benefits services in the amount of $5,900 for the installation of one step assistance through the Texas Community Development Block Grand Colonial Fund. And to allow me to execute if it's approved. That's Rob Stevenson, and that's one of those skills with Mona Ryan.
It used to be. She no longer works for Lanford.
Judy Lanford, excuse me.
Again, my name is Rob Stevenson with Lanford Consulting, and we manage the county's community development block grant contracts. Actually, here today for you for a small technicality. Several board meetings ago, I went before y'all asking for permission to go out for bids for a set of tech installation. I received that permission. Subsequent board meetings later, I received permission to go ahead and pay that contract. Unfortunately, I never got the judge's signature on the contract. And as I was sitting in the last meeting I was at, you had a similar contract with an architect or something like that. So I just wanted to make sure I came before you today and followed the county procedure to ask permission to get the judge to actually sign that contract. Again, the $5,900 set of tech has already been paid. And technically, the work was done under informal procurement measures, which does not even technically necessitate a contract. The contract protects the county. You could simply have an invoice also.
So we need to approve.
I make motion to approve the award of contract for a thankful $5,900 for the extension of one step system protection to develop block grant quality upon contract number 728. Our contract. I'll say.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Robbie, you have it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If you hand it to me outside, I can come.
It's probably in my truck. I'll go there. Thank you.
Number six is to open proposal for employee benefits package for this group of individuals. I need to get a pair of scissors. Sylvia, will you do your own first? This first one says Jess on top, so is that Jess Williams?
Yes.
Who are you?
Why didn't you?
Won't protect you from all. He's had a taste by somebody else. Let me just see what I need. Then you're on your own.
I'm gonna move it to the pot.
Put one upside down for Greg and James. Sorry. You want one?
Yeah.
Oh, this is gonna be. So the first one. Oh, no, you need to go back. I slid it to one. Apologies. So the first one is Jess. Second one is Rusty Rice. It's a Vesus. Second one is Sun Life Financial. Texas Association of Counties. Just like a one big. I'll read that one up in here.
You gotta be rushing to DC.
We have another package. It might be, it may was from Wallace and Associates. This one's from Alamo Insurance Group, number six. What's that? And what's another? Alamo Insurance Group. Oh, they said extra bonders. Did y'all all get one? I got two more there. This one looks like one.
He walks you, ain't done it yet.
No.
I don't think he's.
Tracy, will you hand him the file, please? Who is this last one?
New Kirk.
This one's just one. And then we have. One lady that's not presenting medical bill, she's just gonna present life insurance along when everybody else does their supplemental. Her name's Cam. So anyway, the next item on the agenda is to have ten minute presentations by the agents or brokers who submit proposals for employee benefits, and they're gonna be heard and ordered accordingly. So the first one was you, Jess.
Now, respectfully, I ask for being last for a reason. My son is in a traffic jam, and he's got paperwork. I have some of them. I'm not gonna do that good job, but.
Oh, so you only got little Jess is what you're wanting?
He's stuck in traffic right now.
That's fine.
And I just wondered if, yeah, I was kinda waiting on him. I could. Y'all, please let me go last.
That's fine.
Appreciate it.
Is anybody here from a Vesus, Rusty Rice? You may know who Rusty Rice is?
Yeah, he's the group rep for Vesus. He's a general agent. They name individual agents to represent a Vesus under the plan. They're part of the Alamo.
So he's not here. About Sun Life Financial, is anybody here from Sun Life Financial?
That's my quote, they're not here.
They're not here? Okay. Texas Association of Counties. What is the letter? I'll tell you what it says because.
I think we had a declination from them for what little Jeff, my son, said.
Says, dear Ms. Casper, thank you for giving the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employment Benefits Board the opportunity to submit a group, submit a proposal for your group health coverage. At this time, our underwriters have declined to bid Karnes County. Unfortunately, we are unable to participate in this RFPs since the current carrier's renewal rates were disclosed to all potential bidders, and the local government code requires all proposals to be kept secret until contract award. Back HEP would appreciate the opportunity to assist you with your healthcare needs in the future, so please keep us on. Colonel Casper, thank you.
Okay.
And then, the next one is Wallace and Associates. Do you have to take her?
Fine, we gotta take her. Start with the best.
I can pull it out.
Go right out. Okay, for you new commissioners, my name is Don Wallace. I'm with Wallace and Associates. I'm the owner. I've been in business for 26 years, and we primarily do employee benefits, group health, dental, life. We do Aflac supplemental, and I have submitted a proposal for Aflac to take over your supplemental products. Let me just say a few minutes about Aflac. They don't, they don't have rate increases. I understand that there are some increases coming on your current supplemental products from your carrier. So I would submit that you move those products to Aflac because they don't have increases and their products are comparable to what you have right now, and the prices are either comparable or better than what you have right now. I submitted Sun Life, and they are not competitive, so I'm not gonna waste a lot of time talking about them. I also submitted Dental Select. They are competitive, and you've had Dental Select before in the past, and they, I assume they did a good job for you. I didn't have any complaints. I was, I did not get any quotes on your health insurance, but I have a proposal for you there in the original file that you have. My proposal to the county is this. If you wanna save some money, which most people wanna save money, I've given all you guys folders on the services that we provide, and I've given you some references in there. And my proposal is for you to stay with Humana and make me the agent, and my commissions would be reduced, so you can save money on your current Humana plan and get the services that I provided there.
I see that you broke down the evaluation functions for the broker survey. Do you wanna answer that, that you broke down? The questions that we've been asking, you tell us why we should use your company for insurance.
Well, first of all, we've been in business for 26 years. We have, Wilson County is the closest county that I have, and I've had it for 25 years. And one thing that we do that other agents that I know of don't do, we provide 24-hour service to me, to all your employees. They have my cell phone. They presented my cell phone. We have an 800 number to our office in Seguin, so your employees can call there without a charge. We contact the county person, Lawanna or whoever, once a month to make sure things are right. We come see her every 60 or 90 days. We're very visible to our clients, and we try to, try to help with the process when you go out for quotes. We like to get with our clients and help them put together the package. So we do a lot of things that I don't see other agents doing. And we, that's pretty much it. With, if you do my proposal, your employees don't have to sign up for another carrier. They don't have to get new ID cards. Everything is left the same. Your staff just keeps on going, and there's, basically, it's seamless for your employees and your staff. You don't have to go through an open enrollment to get employees to sign up for another carrier. That's pretty much it.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Humana. The only question I have is how come they don't pay for nothing? That's why they're the cheapest. My doctors won't accept them. Thank you. The thing I've got, I kept my old insurance because the new one ain't no good.
We've had a lot of complaints about Humana not picking up.
You gotta go to their doctors. I've been with my doctor for 25 years. I'm not switching.
Well.
That's the only thing I've gotta say about them. They might be good in one aspect, but they don't take everybody.
Well, I think you'd find some of that with some of the other carriers, too.
I may.
Any other questions?
And I know that's not your fault.
You did say your name was Mr. Wallace, right?
Yes.
Well, just because you work for them doesn't make it your name, so I'm not giving you away.
No, I am Mr. Wallace.
Jerky.
Under arrest, is that the problem?
We just identified.
Not yet.
You are Don Wallace.
Oh, she's got three more to choose from.
Oh, okay.
You'd be the last one.
Nothing to do with you, Mr. Wallace.
Okay. Made me a little nervous there.
I had the attention to do that.
Last time somebody presented, they called him Rusty, so he's all right.
Anyway, the letter in your packet explains my proposal to you and what you would need to do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you.
The next one is Alamo Insurance Group.
No.
And we have lots of bonding. So we have lots of bonding.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
If you're overwhelmed with too many, I'll be happy to take the extras.
Did you, did you fill out something similar to what you filled out to answer the?
The broker survey, yes, ma'am. It's in the binder.
Are y'all together?
Yes.
We work together.
Were you pregnant last year?
Yes, you were.
I was. Hopefully, I'm slimmer this year.
Last year, we went for the sympathy bet. This year, we're going for we need the income.
I thought about bringing my little boy. That way, you know.
So you're old, huh?
But Jeanne likes today.
So are you Kristen?
I am.
Okay.
So let me just kinda walk through the binder real quick with you guys. Tab one tells you who all we went out to market with, and I won't bore you with that, but we went out to market to a lot of different carriers. So if we had declinations, the declination labels are immediately behind the market summary. And this is something that we provide all of our clients every year. Behind tab number two is our broker survey, and that's what I would like to go over. So first of all, we're a full-service brokerage firm. We offer employee benefits, commercial insurance, personal home and auto insurance, boat, the whole gamut. We do bonds, we do all kinds of insurance. We, at Alamo, we specialize in public entity, and we have over 70 public entity clients. One of those is at Escosa County, and we've had them for over 29 years. You're looking at their broker right here. Three years ago, Alamo Insurance Group sold out to Brown and Brown Insurance, and Brown and Brown is a national firm. And what does that mean to Karnes County? It means that we have to go through certain steps every year for all of our clients in order to meet quality control standards, and that means that no client, no matter how small or no matter how large, they're all treated the same. Like I said, we're going to show you our market summary, and we're gonna show you what we do to earn the money that you pay us in commissions. But as far as the national presence goes, Alamo Insurance Group pride, we do business as Alamo Insurance Group in San Antonio because we pride ourselves on our local presence, our local expertise, and our local affiliation with communities, and, you know, really getting out into the community and volunteering and doing all of those things as well. If you look on the next page, one of the things that sets us apart from other brokers is going to be your service team. So I'm the sales executive, and you can see all of the things that I'm responsible for. Aside from myself, you also have an account executive, and you also have an account manager. And that means if you call your account manager, you have a claims issue, you have a question, a claim was denied, you know, something's going on, you have three people that you're gonna have all of our contact information for, including cell phones that you can get in touch with. And so I think that really sets us apart, is the fact that we're all a team, we're all on the same page, we all know what's going on with all of our clients. Jamie Salinas, the account manager, she's the one that's, you know, your day-to-day person. She's typically in the office, she's not out presenting like I am. Greg Caldwellway, same thing. They may be out for open enrollment every now and then, but mostly, they're gonna be behind the desk servicing our clients. And then, of course, you have myself, and we're always available. At the very bottom, I also included Gary Looney's information. He's been in the business for over 40 years, and so I know that I look young and I haven't been around forever, but I do have a really great team, so if I stumble upon something, then I do have others to run back to and get answers I need. Question number three talks about our client services. Again, I think this is what sets us apart from other local brokers. Being a larger broker, we do offer a lot of services. And first and foremost, our human resources tools. The folks that handle your benefits may or may not have their human resource degree. However, they probably wear that hat. So they're in charge of some of those sticky HR questions, FOMA, benefit questions, and they're not really experts in those areas. Well, a lot of our clients are in that boat, so what we've done is we've spent additional money to contract with a few companies, HR Workplace, ZaiWaves, and we have a benefits newsletter that goes out every month, and those services are available to our clients at no charge. The one that I really wanna hone in on is HR Workplace. So if you're rewriting employee policies, they can provide that at no charge. As the social media, and there's just a lot of things in the employment force that are changing every day with social media and some of those things, the EEOC is really coming down on employers. HR Workplace, if you, instead of turning to an HR expert in your office, you could pick up the phone and call an HR expert at HR Workplace. And they are either SPHR certified or PHR certified. And to hire someone in your office, that'd be like $60,000 to $70,000 a year. So that's a really great resource that our clients are loving. Aside from that, we're going to help you with claims issues and claims resolution, plan administration. We can write RFPs, we can streamline that process for you and take that work off of your staff's desk. We stay at the forefront for legislative compliance. Gary Looney sits on the National Board for Blue Cross and Blue Shield when it comes to national healthcare reform, and so he is in Washington lobbying, he's at the forefront meeting with. And so he is in Washington lobbying, he's at the forefront meeting with the folks that are dealing with this bill, and so he comes back and reports to us, and we're able to let our clients know what's going on there. Right now, you guys have an HRA sort of arrangement where you reimburse your deductible. We have administrators that can take care of that for you, and so we can bring, you know, different quotes when it comes to that, as well as COBRA assistance and cafeteria plans, Section 125 administration. So we can do all of that. As far as open enrollments, we pretty much take all of that on ourselves. You have new hires or you're open enrollment, we're going to do all the work when it comes to that. I think we've talked about pretty much everything else on here, but again, you guys can review it later. And the video guide is another service we offer where we can upload your benefit information online to a website that where it's available year-round. So we come in and we present all of this information to your employees, and then what happens when we go away? Well, everybody kind of forgets, and they go back to doing what they're doing, and then they have to go to the doctor, and all of a sudden, the health insurance benefits are going, what was that that Kristen said? I'm not really sure. So they can go back online and view that information, as well as look at the custom packets we provide. I like to give the analogy that we're kind of like your landscape folks. We can't just cut your grass once a year. We've got to pull weeds and, you know, stay on top of it all year-round, and that's what we're here for. And I don't think Carons County has had that. Coming in from gathering information for the RFP, I know it's been quite a lot of work on your staff's desk because they're like, oh, where is that information or whatever? So anyways, moving on, tab number three is the executive summary I put together. And you guys can review this later, but basically I've walked you through where we've been in this process and what our recommendations are. My first recommendation is to stay with Humana. You guys don't have any other suggestions here. I'm sorry. But there's a few things within that that only your incumbent broker is privy to right now. You mentioned your doctors not being on the network. Well, you guys are on a national point-of-service network. Would it be better for you guys to be on a Choice Care network? I mean, these are some things that your broker needs to be looking at. If your doctor's not participating under any Humana umbrellas, then it's a Humana thing, but it just becomes, here's the list of doctors that are really important, and I know you guys mentioned some in the RFP. And we try to accommodate that as best as we can. From there, we have to just look at the different alternate options. Again, I'm not your incumbent broker, so I was not able to pull alternate options for you, but I understand you guys are making the decision for your broker tomorrow, so whoever becomes your incumbent broker can then go gather alternate plans and start looking at different options for you. I know that you guys are used to a low deductible of about $500 to $1,000, and everyone really liked that. But as I dug and got more information, only two checks were cut this year to reimburse that deductible. So when you move up to a higher deductible like you guys have currently, and you only cut two checks a year to reimburse that deductible, you guys have saved a lot of money in premium dollars giving that to Humana for very few people meeting that deductible. So my recommendation there would be to stay with a higher deductible and keep that reimbursement funding option in place because it really makes sense for you guys. Moving forward on dental, am I okay on time?
You actually have had 10 minutes.
Okay. Well, the rest of my recommendations are there, and then the rest of the tabs are just everything we've talked about. You do have some competitive rates on your other lines of coverage, and they're all in the binder. Thank you.
And then the next one is Newark people. Any Newark people? No Newark people? What about Ian Iriebe? No Ian Iriebe? Okay. Yeah, the other one, let's go back to, little Jess is here now. Let's go back to Jess.
Well, Bubba, I want to thank you very much for your time. We had a renewal this year. My son has really conquered the French Biff Biff war out there. I'm also, I just want to tell the court after the 28, 29 years that I've had this court and the courthouse insured, I've got a lot of experience with the people. They drop by, being able to give them advice, more of a homeboy type of deal. And Jess has really, really got claims. He's done really well about getting things processed, about the best, it's the state of the art, it's something like I've never seen before. So we have an increase, and I just want to say, and Mr. Schindel, I want to tell you what, we have to play with the cards that we're dealt with. Some companies will pay 10 times more than another company for different things, and my suggestion is if you please call the office where we can negotiate, we send people out to negotiate with the doctors, and they set a rate, and then we go from there. Because one of them will give and one of them will take. So Bubba's got this, I mean, Jess has got this thing going.
Morning. I presented this binder, does everyone have that? Just wanted to make a comment. We had a, we look at the Section 1 overview, we had a, every year, of course, we have to take a snapshot of the claims, we go out to the marketplace to negotiate, and we had a real tough year, toughest year we've had in a while. Kind of goes through quickly a snapshot of your major claimants. And if we go into the third page, which is this premium versus claims detailed report, shows a 188.25% loss ratio. And I wanted to highlight that before I got to the next page. There's a yellow tab, and it goes in, and it has responses from the carriers that we work with. Aetna, we have a strong relationship with, they declined to quote. There's a notation there from Blue Cross Blue Shield regarding the, when a renewal is exposed to the marketplace under their code, they do not provide a proposal. The next one is Cigna, they are non-competitive. The Pond Life is a new carrier on the marketplace. They said we're not competitive, their rates were 27% over current. And then United Healthcare is one of our partners, and they were not competitive. You know, Humana has two divisions, they have a large group division over 100 in Louisville, Kentucky, and a small group, Green Bay operation is the one that we deal with. Jerry Gononie is the president, we are on a first-name basis, have a lot of business with Humana. So we started with the losses, we started working on this renewal prior to it coming out. Normally, when you see that type of loss ratio, we deliver higher renewals. So, and if you would ask or pull the brokers in the room, they would tell you that 170% loss ratio generally will dictate a higher, even a higher renewal. So the renewal is 15% to stay with the current plan that we have. Y'all asked an RFP for a $500 deductible proposal, and of course, that's a lot higher. I was a little late, and I apologize, and I understand, Commissioner Schindel, that you had some issues with Humana regarding paying claims. We're a strong partner with Humana, and we'd like to take care of those issues, and I will get involved directly in calling the doctor, calling the pharmacist, whatever is happening. We want to make sure, we make sure Humana's paying according to the contract. So the reason I went through that is we don't have any other options, in my opinion, so we are recommending y'all stay with Humana. If we can look at the Section 2, Humana. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the claims because they give some real nice detailed reporting. And there's a section there that says utilization reports stability cost-effective healthcare strategy. And if you'll turn the next page, I thought that was some information that jumps out at you that you might take note of. It goes performance versus similar groups, and it talks about benefit utilization, and it says this group, and then it compares you to similar groups, you're same size. And one thing that kind of jumped out at me was, you know, you're pretty close there in office visits, but if you go down to prescriptions, it's 902, and similar groups are at 559, which is 61% higher than most groups are same size. And that could be caused because of some chronic conditions that are going on, but those prescriptions are something that we need to take note of, and perhaps during an open enrollment. We can really encourage, there's other prescription services like through Walmart, or HEV, or Target that people can utilize, and it actually doesn't go against your claim history. So we've done that in past enrollments where we'll actually provide the information from them to make everyone aware that those prescription services from like Walmart or HEV are available. And that's helped out with that percentage and helps out with prescription costs. But I wanted to make note of that. One of the things that I'm excited about, and I know I'm limited on time, but if we'll go to the Section 5, the Wellness Plan. And Humana had just started to initiate this in large group, and now they're really full-fledged into it in the groups under 100, and they brought a company in South Africa, and now, and they called their program Vitality. And you know that old saying, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure? And if we'll take some initiatives, and when I say we take, y'all take some initiatives, we as our, the agency, take some initiatives to try to help y'all implement some wellness strategies, and y'all mentioned that in the RFP. And what's nice about this, this is no cost to the county because it's already built into your premium, but Humana, if we can get 40 members to participate, they have gotten this approved, 40 members. If they can get, we can get 40 members to participate, we can help out our premium a full 10% for next year. And during this effort, if we can get y'all to embrace it, they will go up, come in and do biometric screenings, which are free to the employees, they'll check their blood, there's a wellness assessment that we could do online or help them do online, and this is all stuff that will engage the employees in becoming healthier and hopefully preventing major things to happen, which that's where the major claims occur, of course, in the hospital. So I'm glad that Humana's embraced this in such a way, and it made it easy, made it part of their program, and it's no cost to the county. So I highly encourage, if we remain with, the only option here is to remain with Humana, but to get involved in this wellness initiative. I'm excited about it. I make choices with healthcare with my group each and every year. I recently moved to Humana, and one of the reasons I did was not only the premium was the fact that they have this vitality program. So I just wanted to point that out. I know that currently we have the life with principle, and one of the nice things with Humana is if we will add the life to, and make it part of Humana, have Humana will start, they will take 1% additional off the medical rate. I think that's a nice way to go because it makes it simpler for administering the policy as well. I was also told, if we would add, I just got this, I negotiated this on the way here, if we could do the long-term disability, are y'all familiar with long-term disability with the benefit that we currently have, currently do not have, but if the county would purchase long-term disability from Humana and the group term life, which is 1% off the medical anyway, so really if we just add the long-term disability, they would take 5% off the renewal. So you actually are getting benefits for free by adding them. Does that make sense? So I think that's a nice way to, a nice way to add benefits to your, for your employees and save on the medical premium.
Mr. Williams, that's time.
It's up to time. Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Williams.
I'd just like to personally thank you on behalf of the county for getting those death claims paid, that something happened there with payment, and they were refusing to pay these death claims that we had, I think we had, had several of them.
Twenty minutes.
Anyway, I just want to really thank you for getting that taken care of. I know that was a lot of, a lot of phone calls and a lot of twisting of arms there because there's really touch and go there for a while.
Thank you, yeah, I was a couple of sleepless nights, but yeah, that was an unfortunate thing, but at the end of the day, the company did what was right, and paid the claims, and I appreciate you thanking me for that. That was a tough, tough time.
You must have showed up in person because you look like somebody that could twist some arms if you wanted.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you, y'all, thank you.
Kim?
Good morning.
Kim's not mad at me too much, is she?
Yeah, y'all are gonna love me. Because I'm gonna take about five minutes of your time if you want me to leave.
Please leave.
Open that up, I will just tell you what I have in it for you. I'm with Liberty National, we provide supplemental health and voluntary life insurance. I know you are offering supplemental products right now. Our claim to fame is our life insurance. We've been in business since 1900, our corporate office is in Kenny, Texas. I actually live and work out of Gonzalez, so I'm the local agent for the area. I do everything from meeting with the decision-maker to handling claims for my clients, they all have my cell phone number, so I am their contact person. Our claim to fame, like I said, is our life insurance. We offer a group term life insurance to age 100. It is bought, it is offered to the group, but is an individual policy to each of your employees. It is guaranteed renewable till they are 100 years of age, which is not common in the industry. Your rates will never increase, unlike most group term. Once you leave the group after retirement or you leave your, the workplace, this carries with your employee with no rate change. Your coverage can never be reduced, unlike typical terms, once you hit 65, 70, that coverage will start to reduce, and you can cover you, your spouse, and your dependents. Like I said, you can continue coverage once you leave. We cover up to $100,000, we offer that, and these, this benefit is all voluntary, so it's nothing that the county would pay for or participate in the premiums. It is voluntary if the employee chooses to participate, that's their choice. And this is a product that's only available in the workplace, couldn't go to anybody's house on the weekend and sell it to them, so it is a unique opportunity. Also, what makes it unique is the fact that it is a pre-tax product. So unlike other life insurance, the employees, when they participate, they will save on average about 20% on their premiums because that deduction will be pulled prior to their paycheck being taxed. That being said, it also puts money back into the county because you pay less payroll taxes. taxes. So that is what I would like to offer them, not to replace any life that you're currently offering, just an added benefit because it is a unique product. Liberty National is the only one in the industry that offers this. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody. Anybody come in late that we missed? So number eight is to discuss review employee benefits before you receive this year 2013 in Wana. We had that on air, I guess we've pretty much done that. Anything you want to add?
There's not anything I want to add. I think it requires the review of the court members, not just this slight presentation because there's a lot of things involved and different avenues as far as the products themselves and the services available. Normally, we always phone a committee for review to present a recommendation to the court, but in the essence of time, the court voted to make the decision on their own without a review. The award, yes. Or the, I guess, the agent-broker selection because obviously the only health proposal that there is is Humana.
So we actually have no alternative proposals but Humana?
Not for health, that's correct.
And so...
Who did you have? Did you have Humana too?
I'm happy to get in as the negotiating and the bundling, only your incumbent broker can do that. So whoever you select, that will begin once you guys select a broker.
So the price, the price will not vary, it's just the choices, the agent services they give us.
Correct.
What are the choices we have?
That's all we have as far as the health choice, yes.
Yes, sir?
The price could vary based on what commission the agent is asking for.
That's all specified in these quotes.
And as far as Alamo, we did not specify commission. So please don't make your decision based on the commission levels. We will accommodate you guys, however.
Is it optional or would the court consider going into closed session to discuss it so that you don't have the interjections from the proposers that are in the audience?
We're going to run into a problem here.
You can't do it?
No, I don't, I don't think that's the problem. Can we, I don't know, we have the meeting posted in five minutes. Can we recess? I mean, because if it's us going into executive session or anything, they would need to be here tonight, maybe the award presentation tomorrow. Right. So I guess that's the, you know, unless the other deal is tomorrow on the agenda when we do that, where it says presentation recommendation, we decide to present, I mean, everybody can come in with their recommendation after they look at the packages. We can do it that way too. Because this is a lot of stuff to look over in just a couple of minutes. I mean, I can't digest this in any small amount of time. I actually want to look through it in the binders. So I'll work with this job. So number nine, if y'all want to do that, y'all want to read, y'all want to be able to look at these packages so y'all can make an informed decision. So why don't we do that? You have all your binders? Some of the next slide on the agenda is adjourned and then we'll do the presentations and awards and stuff tomorrow. All in favor, sit down. I'm actually carrying four here. We've got about five minutes. So if you'd like to get up and stretch.
Try to get me a beer.